Hello, everyone. I am Michael Brown from Montgomery College Television, and I'm going to be your moderator today. We are on the Tacoma Park Silver Spring Campus. We're in the Commons Building in the atrium, and Dr. Pollard is very excited to be hosting her very first Town Hall meeting of this academic year. As always, if you're close by and you're watching online, please come over and join us. It's a beautiful day for a walk over here, and this is a gorgeous space on the Tacoma Park Silver Spring Campus. We have plenty of chairs, so we'd love to see you here. Now, my main job is to keep Dr. Pollard focused on your questions. Again, if you're watching online, you can email those questions to TownHall@MontgomeryCollege.edu, and we're going to try to get to as many questions as we can. We already have a few that have come in online, but keep them coming, the more the better. And you can do me a couple of favors, keep your questions brief, and make sure you identify yourself before you ask your question. So, without further ado, here's Dr. Pollard.
Well, thank you, my dear. Very happy to be here. Welcome, everyone. This is our first one for the year. Those of you who've been to it, because quite a few in the audience have been to a few of these, we spend a lot of time talking about the issues that are most important to the college community, whether they be coming in through questions. I think we have a little bit under half a dozen or dozen or so that have come in already. So that should be fun, and then we have an interaction with you all. I get my energy from you, so I need y'all to stay pumped up. I haven't had lunch yet because I didn't want to over-caffeinate myself. Y'all know how that happens. But we're going to get started, and I want to start with a couple of announcements and a few comments, and then move into questions. First of all, I want to thank the Tacoma Park Silver Spring Campus. Thank you, Dr. Stewart and Kim and everybody who makes it all the time a wonderful place to be. I look forward to coming here. I look forward to having the opportunity. Great hospitality, so thank you all very much. I also got to give a big shout-out to my lovely MCTV people. My understanding is that many of them were out late working on the soccer game last night, and they're here. They're making sure that we all are able to participate in this. I just want to thank them. They go through a lot of effort to make sure that these things are able to be livestreamed, so as always, I'm grateful to you all. Thank you all very, very much. With that, start of semester, we have a little bit over 25,500 students in credit this year. By the end of the year, we will probably have double that amount in non-credit, so we're very excited about where we are this year in terms of enrollment. We have seen great numbers of students coming to us. We have our first class of Aces students who are here. A little bit under 300 of them have come to us from Montgomery County Public Schools, so it's an excellent time to be at Montgomery College because we have lots of good things going on. To our students who are watching and those who may be in the room, we are excited to be here. We have support services to make sure that you're able to be successful. We have outstanding faculty teaching some of the most relevant curriculum that we know of right now, and we have a team of folks who are dedicated to your success. So thank you all for being here. Thank you for coming back this semester. Those of you who have been here before and those of you who are new, we are very happy to have you at Montgomery College. I'll also say that last week, we celebrated the opening of the Bio-Education Science Building, I believe it's Bioscience Education Building, at the Germantown Campus. Wonderful. Congratulations to the Germantown Campus. Just so you'll know, we are excited about one coming to the Tacoma Park Silver Spring Campus. If I could break ground today, I would, but we are not. It takes process. It takes about 10 years or more for a building to go from the time it gets on the capital list to the time that we actually break ground on it. I would tell you, though, the first week I was here back in the fall of 2010, I walked this campus, and I had a number of faculty and the provost make it very clear to me that we need new science facilities at this campus. So we're very excited. It is in the capital budget plan, and we're moving forward with that. I'll also say, let me just see what else I'm supposed to talk about in my little introduction comments. I want to thank those of you who've been doing some very focused work around the closing achievement gap. As you know, we have, I have dedicated this year, the board has been very explicit in this as well, to look at this issue and really unpack it from the college's perspective. Oftentimes, when we talk about achievement gap, we're talking about it from a K-12 space. Here's an opportunity for us in a higher ed space to own the fact that it is unfair, it is inequitable, and to be quite frank, it goes against our very mission, I think, to have an institution where all students are not thriving at equitable rates within the institution. So we've had a group of folks that first last year developed a plan. I see Dr. Tony in the audience. He was one of the co-leaders of that group with Counselor Hilda to lead that group of about 80 people to develop an initial plan about this. Now we have a group who are working on the implementation. I see Dr. Monica Brown here, and Jason Rivera are co-leading that group. Each month, my focus when I talk with the board is going to be looking at a piece of this issue. This month of September, I'm going to actually be talking about our own internal demographics around these issues. How do we look at us compared to MCPS? How do we look at us compared to the county, even dare I say, some broader implications? Very excited about that, and very excited about the opportunity to focus on that as an institution. So with that, I'm going to pause. That was my introduction. I'm going to turn it over to Mike, and we're going to go ahead and get started.
All right. Our first question comes from Jennifer Haydel, Assistant Professor of Political Science at the Germantown Campus. She wants to commend the college for starting shuttle service between Rockville and Tacoma. I am also curious to find out the plans for expanding shuttle service, especially between the Germantown and Tacoma Park campuses. As you probably know, public transit options between these two campuses can take one and a half to two hours, and it has been difficult to coordinate across these campuses for student events as a result.
Thank you, Ms. Jennifer. I appreciate the ques-- if I had a dollar for every time that this question has been posed to me or some version of it, I could retire early. I would tell you that we are very excited about this shuttle service. I was actually at this campus the first day of school, and we actually saw students getting on the shuttle, going back and forth between those campuses. As a way of background, this was this crazy dream I had based on feedback from students and faculty and staff about ways in which we need to increase our ability to really act as one institution and be able to get around, and particularly as we think about how we're going through our academic restructuring, those folks who have to be on multiple campuses, who want to be on multiple campuses, and also our students. We have about 15% of our students right now, that number might even be increased, who take courses at two or more campuses. That number is growing very rapidly, and I think as we look at greater schedule coordination that's happening through the academic restructuring, we're going to see more and more of that occurring. So I charged Dr. Womack to work with her team to come up with a strategy on this, and what they did, just so people know, we didn't just kind of pull it out of thin air. What we actually did is look at the data. We looked at where are students who are taking multiple classes, where they're actually taking those classes from. Most of them are taking them at Rockville and Tacoma Park, and they're going back and forth between there, not to say that they aren't doing that at Germantown. So we thought it was important to pilot. We wanted to make sure that, one, we could develop a routing system that worked well, a timing system that worked well, and we did that by looking at what the data told us thus far. However, let's be very clear, we are looking at that and wanting to expand to Germantown. As a matter of fact, Dr. Womack just told me yesterday, they're looking at the data. The data is very compelling, what we've seen thus far. What was the last number you told me about?
We doubled our ridership.
We have doubled our ridership on the shuttle between these two locations. So we're going to be looking at very, very much now how we can start to do that to the Germantown Campus with the goal that next semester, we might be able to have something to run there. Very important, though, these take, this takes money, so we want to make sure, one, if we're going to redirect resources to this, which we've done, that we're able to demonstrate ridership, which we obviously be able to do. And, you know, I got this crazy idea. At one point, I want all these buses to be purple, right, riding around Montgomery County. But the buses that we are using, now they do say Montgomery College, they have our logo on it. That's very exciting, so I'm very grateful to Dr. Womack and her team who made it happen. They heard the students who are the most articulate about this issue, certainly our faculty and staff who also were very supportive. So I'm hopeful, in the very near future, you'll see Germantown Campus as well in that. Let's not forget, though, we have students at the Wheaton who need transportation around, students who are at the Gavisberg Center. So we have some real issues, and we have to also sit down and figure out how we measure that with the commitment that we've also made to ride on in the public services we have there. So, great question. Thank you, Ms. Jennifer, and I hope that you're riding it. All right.
All right. We'll go to another online question. This one came from Amy Rosick, Director of Student Access, and her question is, "Three of the four welcome centers have been open a year with the Tacoma Park Silver Spring Campus. Welcome Center up and running now. This is just one example of more emphasis on access. Why and how do you see the access team members as vital to meeting the needs of our prospective and continuing students?"
Yeah, I got to say, this is probably one of the most critical issues that I think is facing us right now as an institution, and thank you, Amy, for that question for many reasons. One, the welcome centers have been critical. We are seeing that students are visiting those. There's a way in which we can triage. We can also help some of the impact. If you go, those of you who haven't done it in a while, I challenge you, stop by financial aid, stop our registration the first couple of weeks, and you will see lines going out of the building. You'll also see if they're trying to spend more time with students who are having very difficult situations. They can't do that. Can you imagine the stress? I'm having a conversation with you, Tracy, and I see a line of 300 people waiting to be seen. So as a result of that, the welcome centers help create that triage spot that allows that, so I'm so excited about that. I even suggested to her, Amy, in a side comment, just, you know, I know we have one at Manneke. They rotate staff through there. If it's not being used, let's figure out how we use that space and differently use that staff to make sure we have the support on the campuses. But what's important about that, the welcome centers are just one part of our access mission and the work that's being done in student services. The demography of Montgomery County is changing. If you haven't seen any of the data, it's very compelling, and as a result of that, we have to be very thoughtful about how we connect with students and access their ability to get to this institution and meet them where they are. A compelling story for me, and many of you may have heard this, and I apologize. I sit on, or sat on, the Board of Impact Silver Spring, a wonderful nonprofit here in Montgomery County, and they do what they call community capacity building, and they work with networks of people to be able to figure out how they can access the assets of this county and build their own capacity around many different areas. What's critical about this, though, is that we had a board meeting where they actually had one of the network members come in and talk. African male immigrant, probably, I'd say, in his mid-40s, and he's talking about how powerful the network had been for him and what was happening, and his big announcement is that he was taking correspondence classes in electronics. So I kind of paused, and he doesn't know who I am. I'm just a person sitting on the Board, and I kind of said, I said, "Correspondence classes? Now, why, do you think about going to Montgomery College?" And he said, "Well," and literally said this, "Montgomery College just seems so far away." So, you know, me, I was in that moment of kind of being a little not using my critical thinking skills, and I said, "Well, you only live about three or four miles away from the college, right?" Because he had said this in that space, and he told us where he lived, and we knew he was in close proximity. I said, "I know the bus system in Montgomery County leaves a lot to be desired, but, you know, you could probably get to that campus and take classes that might be more relevant," because I'm thinking, "if he's taking correspondence classes, he's not getting financial aid. He may not be at a place that's accredited, and how's he going to ensure that that credential or something is going to lead to sustainable employment, right?" So he said to me, he said, "No, that's, I don't mean that." He said, "Montgomery College just seems so far away." And I sat there, and I said, "Let's unpack that a little bit." He said, "What would be wonderful if the college had like a little center in my huge apartment complex where I could go and someone could talk to me, and once I got comfortable, then somebody, then I could go to the college." So y'all know what this got in my head, right? Our engagement centers. That's exactly what it's about. Y'all think I just make this stuff up. It really happens, right? This is what happened, and we talked about this, and that's the reality, is that our community is changing, and yes, we are very lucky. If you look at, according to MAC, we have one of the highest yield rates of community engagement, community participation in our community college. We have one of the best yield rates from our high schools who come to us, and our folks work really hard at that. But I would tell you, there are pockets in this community that have very little access to Montgomery College. So the idea that our access team, those folks who are working in the response center, hello, if you ain't done it, I challenge you to do it. I spent an afternoon with them and walked out thinking I need to be sending them chocolate every day because they are answering questions, and their ability to access it so quickly and know it, they're doing that. Our recruiters, yeah, we want them to go out and hold college fairs and go to different places and participate, but part of their job now is changing. They're going to actually be thinking about, "How do I go into community centers? How am I going to be spending time going into places where folks may not know of the college? I'm going to meet them where they are." So access, how do we start using technology in more efficient ways? You know, I'm always struck by, now you go buy something online, and all of a sudden, this person pops up, "Would you like to live chat with me right now?" And that kind of freaks me out. Now, I don't know about y'all. It kind of freaks me out. You want to live chat about what you're going to buy? I'm like, "No, I need you to tell me what I need to be buying right now." But, you know, you kind of have that whole experience. But I keep thinking, the nonprofits are doing this already. So why shouldn't we be having a conversation about how our technology can be used to help when a student comes to our website, and we realize they're pinking on five different things, that something should pop up and say, "Can we help you?" I don't know. That's about access, right? I'll stop there because I, you know, I see I got long. So, Ms. Amy, I would tell you that I have profound respect. So we have the whole, the three tiers of student services, access, success, and engagement. Critical, critical, everything that the literature tells us about student completion is about what's happening in student services. So, yeah, I didn't just make that up. That's why we have a new student services division is doing the work. Thank you, everybody who's doing that. And I'm done. Sorry. No caffeine?
Look out if she has some.
Yeah.
All right. We're going to go back to an online question. This one comes from Nancy Nyland, librarian on the Germantown Campus. She asks, "The college recently announced the formation of Innovation Works. Would the college consider being innovative in the area of performance evaluations? Companies like Netflix, Yahoo, and Adobe have scrapped formal reviews in favor of a system of ongoing conversations, sometimes called continuous performance management."
Well, Nancy, you on to something right there, girlfriend, because as somebody who has to do quite a few of them, performance evaluations each year, I'm thinking, it would be nice if we did this year-round. Actually, I do know that this is some of the work that HR is actually looking at right now. There's got to be some new models that work more effectively for the size of the organization we are and the constant need to engage employees about performance. It can't be an annual thing, which it shouldn't be now. Just for the record, anybody who's only talking to their employees about performance once a year is not doing it right. If they got to, y'all, y'all, really, it's a problem. You need to be doing that on a routine basis, giving critical feedback, and the performance appraisal simply is a way of validating what you've already been talking about all year, right? That's really what it should be about, and it's documenting that for the file. It's continuous in and of itself. So part of that is changing our mindset as an organization about how we approach the process we have now, using the tools. Taleo is a powerful tool. Yeah, for some of us who have different brain schema, it's sometimes hard to navigate. We got to learn it and get in there, and if you only go in there once a year, it really becomes problematic, right? Right? All right. So this is part of what we have to do as well. But I think Nancy's point is also critical. You know, I have a friend of mine who works for, what's the company? Nelson, used to work for Nelson, and I was so struck, and I'm trying to figure out how, in a much smaller organization, she was at the corporate headquarters and worked in research, which the whole area is research, but she was in research, and they literally had a process where every three months quarterly, the managers came together, and in addition to talking about the performance of the team, they also looked at, we know that I have planned that, you know, Darian is going to be promoted into this position in six months, so what's the career path about how we're going to do this? 60% of our employees have come from within. It's now time for us to go out and recruit for talent, and to do a very different type of human resource management and talent management than, to be quite frank, we know how to do in higher ed. We don't know how to do this. This is something we're learning because there's a part of us that resents the fact, and I've heard this a lot, "We're not a business." Yeah, we are. We're a $250 million business with over 3,000 employees. If that ain't a business, I don't know what is, right? So let's be very thoughtful about how we use processes. We can't keep thinking about them in these little bitty boxes. So innovation, as it relates to how we manage talent, how we look at our resources, how we grow talent from within, the thing that keeps me up awake at night, usually somebody asks me this in one of these things, one of them is this issue of talent management. We have so many folks, we have a perfect storm, and we've talked about this in several places. One is that we have the number of people who are eligible for retirement. What percentage of our employees are eligible for retirement in five years? Like 60%. 60% of our employees at Montgomery College, not the fixed-tissue institution, are eligible for retirement in five years. So you've got that perfect storm that's happening nationally. You talk about the, those who would typically come to replace them, Gen Xers and the other gen, they're smaller in number than the number of people who are retiring. So you simply have a supply and demand issue, and then because you had an under-investment in public support for community colleges, higher ed, and public institutions, what's some of the first things we cut as institutions? Professional development. So we didn't grow our people, so now you've got folks who are looking, okay, who was that who told me she wants to be president in three years? I always tease her. I said, "Well, you can't be president in three years. We got to, we're going to work on a little bit of time for you to do that, but if you want to be president, let's figure out how we get you on that, that pathway to do that." There's, so all this perfect storm has created a moment. We have to be thinking, as Nancy's saying, how do we constantly assess performance? How do we think differently about employee engagement, which is what the year of the employee is about? So thank you, Nancy, for that question. I hope I responded to it.
All right. We have another online question, and this is from a student, and I'm hoping I'm pronouncing this correctly, Jean Jules Foggang.
Jean, like Jean-Luc Picard?
Well, I did soccer last night, so that kind of gave me a, you know, a little leg up on that.
Good, good.
"I live in Aspen Hill. My nephew is in Africa and wants to pursue higher education. Why should he choose MC over other colleges, and what are the major requirements for admission?"
So two things I'm going to do. I'm going to ask Amy Rosick, who I'm hoping is watching this since I asked her a question, and we're going to connect our access folks, huh? Y'all know what I'm talking about? See, I need to set this up, to talk with this student, to help him understand that the pathway that his nephew can follow. We have international recruiters and teams that actually can talk about that process. There's all kinds of visa things invested and so forth. But for me, three reasons why his nephew should think about coming to Montgomery College. We are student-focused and student-centered. I'm amazed at the ways in which our institution works to ensure the students have not only an exceptional experience here, but a relevant experience here. Secondly, we are cost-effective and affordable for many students. In terms of a pathway, it makes logical sense to think about how you can get high-quality education, not from a TA. You can get it by faculty who are deeply invested in your success and be thoughtful about a pathway to completion. And third, I think is interesting, we are an organization that is growing and transforming to be the type of college that's going to be relevant for the future. That, to me, is very exciting. So if I had to give you three quick reasons why you should be thinking about Montgomery College, that's what I would do. And I could tell you all kinds of stuff. We have great engagement. We have great student support. We have folks who are thinking about how to make your life better and easier and well-supported, but those are some of the initial things that I would say about why someone should be thinking about coming to Montgomery College. Besides, we can be your gateway and passport to wherever you want to go from here. Our students are going, I think we have students in 35 states who transfer from Montgomery College to someplace else, 170 countries represented. We're rivaling the UN here in a minute. I want to get to that number. I think the UN is like 206 countries represent. I want to, I want to do that. It'd be kind of cool, wouldn't it? I'm sorry. Go ahead, my dear. I was giving you time. You see how I did that?
Yes.
I was slick. Thank you. I should have called you out on it, but I, I.
That's called vamping.
Yeah.
All right. We have a question from Matt Wilson in Auxiliary Services here at Tacoma Park Silver Spring. "I frequently see advertisements for other colleges and universities across many different channels. Do you view this advertising as a potential threat to our enrollment, and does the college have any plans to increase our advertising?"
Yes and yes. So let's be clear about this. I got a little fired up the other day. I'm driving on the Rockville Campus. I'm coming down Little Nelson Street, Gary going to Manneke, and I see, what's the name of our bus, ride-on bus coming on the campus? What's on the side of the ride-on bus coming onto the Rockville Campus of Montgomery College? Don't say their name. I'm not giving them no free advertisement, but their name was somebody else's university's name was on the side of a bus coming onto Montgomery College. So if I'm sitting at the Rockville Campus, I'm at the bus depot, and, you know, I'm waiting for bus number five to come because I'm, six other ones done come past, and I see each one of them keep coming past, convenient. We support you. We do this. We don't talk about the fact, well, let me stop because I want, I want the lawyers calling me. So they don't say the other things. They just highlight these things. All of a sudden, you got to start thinking, if I'm a student, hmm, maybe perhaps I need to have a conversation with them. So what's very interesting, Amy, they're going to set you up good. Access, right? Here's what we're talking about. The reality at the end of the day is that our students live in a far more competitive place for academics than what we may have thought possible. For so long, Montgomery College has been the primary game in town. The reality is that it is changing, and we need to be very thoughtful about that. So when we start having conversations about relevant curriculum that's aligned to our transfer institutions, we talk about the technology that's needed to prepare our students for the future. We talk about support services. Glenn and I were just talking about this. Some of these institutions are literally pushing students through, and they are doing it in ways that, you know what, we need to be having conversations about how we start to do some of that work, and we are doing that. But the reality is that we have to stop thinking about the fact that they're just going to keep coming to us, because they'll come to us for some things, but they can also have the ability of going to other places. So yes, they are our competition. Yes, we want to be good partners. We can partner with lots of different people, but at the end of the day, y'all know, folks are coming for your people. So we have to be very thoughtful about how we, as an organization, have to reorient the way. How many of you, I used to be one of these people. I used to, you know, you go to my sister, she's a shopper. Oh, Lord Jesus, she's a shopper, shopper, shopper. Said, "Let's go shopping. Let's go to the mall." I'm not a shopper. I'm a buyer, right? But I'd go to the mall with my sister, and I'd sit here, and I'd people-watch, and I'd say, "You go over here, and I'll sit here." Every other store I'd go to, right? Well, now, I don't even go to the store mall. I do all my shopping online. You think almost, I can probably say 90% of my shopping I do online, and now I can be competitive about it. I can look at, oh, this person, they had the same suit, hmm, this, here, I can go over here and get it a little bit cheaper. Oh, and they have four different colors. I can have it in. Oh, and somebody will live chat with me to make sure that I'm understanding that they can do free alterations and send it back to me. Oh, and they have a pair of shoes that will complement this outfit very well, and we noticed you wear clip-on earrings based on your trail that you left in our shopping, so we're going to go ahead and suggest a clip-on earring to cordate and also go with the other suit that you bought last month. Y'all think I'm joking? So this is just shopping, and y'all do this. Can you imagine what's happening in the education space? So these transformations that we're doing as an organization, it's relevant to what's happening right now. So either we can wait and be left behind and then end up responding to what's happening, or we can choose to be in front of it and take the courage it takes to have those different conversations. Did I answer that question?
You sure did.
All right.
All right. We have a question from a gentleman in the room.
Yes, sir. Ah, Mr. Pretty. No fair.
Hi, I'm Pollard. Great to see you here. Great to see Silver Spring Tacoma Park and all the glory. You've been speaking of a couple terms that are near and dear to me in regards to competition and business, and it's, it's interesting to me as I talk to students about their process of moving from an associate's degree to a baccalaureate degree. The first thing they start doing a year out is they start looking at how their institution that they're going to would, would accept credits. And I'm just wondering, as we work really hard within the University of Maryland system, which we love, and our Montgomery County Public Schools, what are some ways that you're starting to see us create better articulation so that we have students stay here and retain them? Can you, can you talk about that a little bit?
So, yeah, I think there are probably multiple, multiple levels to your question. And those of you who don't know, this is Michael Pretty, one of our trustees. Very happy to see you here today. Yeah, we advertise it to the trustees as well, and many of them view, but we have a few able to drop by every once in a while. So what I would offer to you about this is a couple of things. One is that we have a very robust articulation office that works in academic affairs to look at how do we align curricula, how do we ensure that it's relevant curricula, and more importantly, that we're doing this on a routine basis. A lot of universities and colleges got into a problem many years ago. They would create these articulation agreements, and then they never look at them again for 10 or 15 years. So we're in a process of continuously looking at those and ensuring that we have the alignment from the two to the four-year institution. I would say we're also doing some of that work at the high school level, but it's less, it's more clearly mandated what we have to do and how we align, but the CCR/CCA is actually very clear in that. SB 740, those of us who spend a lot of time, is how do we ensure from the moment a student walks into this organization that they are aligned toward a degree and completion, and that as an organization, we are organized appropriately to meet that end. I'll also share with you is that what we do, I think exceptionally well here, is think about how we bring in business partners with this. And I'm going to be challenging you next year. I decided I had to take it on this year. We have this, I don't want to call it archaic, but maybe it is, system where we have these kind of county-wide career and technical advisory groups that advise both the high school and the community college. I might offer that it's time to relook at that process and make sure that we have the most relevant curriculum being developed and have the right people asking those questions, and there's a constant engagement, because we know the technology is changing. There are new habits of mind, new discourses evolving in so many disciplines. How do we ensure that that's going to be relevant? So I think we have a good track on that. I think there's obviously opportunity I think there's obviously opportunities for more work, and we're gonna be doing a lot more about that as we think about workforce development. Because workforce economic development is workforce development. You can't build the economy of the future if you don't have the workers to go into that. Some of the work we're seeing in our cybersecurity program, the work that we're doing around general education, I have to tell you, that, to me, is one of the most exciting things. I just think I saw an announcement that's going out about the work that's gonna be starting, and the forums are gonna be about this. This is critical work. It's not, it's no longer these departments. We're highly, much more integrated, and we have to start thinking about ourselves in that way. Thank you.
Okay, we have an online question from a student.
All right.
And he is concerned about what happens when he takes an assessment test. And he's wondering what he should do if he's taking an assessment test, and he needs to ask a professor a question on the exam, but there's no professor there.
So I think a couple of things. One is, if I'm understanding the question correctly, dear student, our assessment centers were not originally designed to do testing, and somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, of missed class time. If you miss a test, you go to the assessment center to take it. Or some faculty, based on their schedule, say, "You know, all my testing might be done here." Our assessment centers were actually not designed that way. They were actually designed for the intent of administering the placement test for students and the various multiple placement test options that we had and some of the other requirements that would come with that. But they've taken on this additional responsibility, and I think, to be quite frank, I think there's some work being done to figure out if this is sustainable. We have a huge responsibility they have to do each year as it relates to assessment of student learning and placement, but also taking on this function of testing becomes problematic for exactly the question that the student posed. If I have a question, if I'm in a class taking a test, I might be able to ask my instructor, but if my instructor isn't there, is that affecting the student's performance and outcome? And I think that's a really real question. I don't have a quick answer to that. No, the instructor isn't there. And I think we have to have conversations about how do we ensure the success of students in a very different way, but also what are the responsibilities that the offices are doing that? And I don't think our assessment centers were designed that way, even though they've taken on that responsibility. Is that fair assessment? Yay? Okay, those, that's up to you.
I also have a follow-up from a member of your staff.
Okay.
And he said that they have more information on this, and that they are going to email it to the questioner at the conclusion of the town hall.
Thank you, member of my staff.
All right, we have another student question. "Are the teachers' course coordinators going to get more training on how to use Blackboard? Many of the teachers are creating incomplete material. For example, Blackboard has a to-do list, but few of the classes work with it. Work with it to maximize their students' productivity so we can focus on what's important, which is the material."
You know, I really appreciate that student's question for a couple of reasons. I think, some people might say, "Ah, you're telling somebody how to teach or what to do in the classroom." They actually, I think, raise some pretty compelling points about how we think about technology. And I'll share this with you. My son just started second grade. You know, this is the funnest thing ever, right? His teacher started this dojo points. Anybody else who's ever heard of dojo? I had never heard of dojo points. But literally, I can go onto an app right now, and I can tell you how many dojo points Miles has accumulated today based on positive behavior in the classroom. Literally, I can go and do this. I'm gonna do it, demonstrate this while we're talking, while I'm explaining why this is important. So, we go into the class for the parent feedback day, class dojo, that's what it's called right here, and I can tell you there right now that Miles Pollard Jones has earned one dojo point for responsibility today, right? And this is, all day long, if I want to see how he's doing, I can see what points he's earned. What I think is remarkable about this is this scared the hell out of me, excuse me, as a parent, because I, one, I had to download the app, I had to do all this kind of work, and then we go to the classroom, and then these kids, second grade, they're working on Samsung Galaxy tablets, right? Now, and then he comes home and tells me, "Mama, you know, I think we need to get one of these, because I'm do, and I know how to do my math homework on this." And I'm sitting here having this moment as a parent, right? And thinking, this is only going to keep happening over and over and over again. Then I think back now, if I can translate this, when I taught. I was a pretty good teacher, I think. A very good faculty member in composition and literature. I did not have some of the tools that folks are using right now to teach. And a part of what we do as faculty is professionally grow. So part of what's happening here is that some faculty are coming into these Blackboard spaces, and they are learning this technology at the same time that the students are learning. And the students have oftentimes a different schema, and they're picking it up so much quickly, because guess what? They've been doing it their whole life almost, right? So there's a reality check that's happening there. But here's the beautiful part, we have an exceptional elite program that is working with faculty to help them understand more fully how to use these technologies, the various ones, how to implement them, how to make it their own. And I'd also offer to you, that, is it the fall of 2015? There's gonna be some, faculty have come together to identify a series of things that they will have in those spaces for online technology. There are many components to Blackboard that we may not use as an institution. There are many parts that we should, and a lot of that, I never want to infringe on the academic freedom of a faculty member in their space, but we also want to make sure that they have the appropriate training to help them use those tools effectively. So thank you, student, for that question.
Well, he has a second question.
Oh, he does?
He certainly does.
He's on a roll.
This is George Carlisle.
Thank you, George.
"Are the students going to get more training, students, are the teachers going to get more training on how to think critically? If you want us to be critical thinkers, you have to be too. These teachers are too rigid in their thinking."
Well, you know, first of all, George, thank you. This is a student perspective, let's be very real. He put it out here, and I think it's a good conversation to have. I think critical thinking is something that all of us have, and that we, in an academic institution, we are certainly trying to figure out how we grow that individually, how we grow that in our students. I would offer that we have some of the best faculty in the country that I've ever worked with, and I can say that having worked across the country. We also have faculty who are constantly in a state of personal growth, whether it be for the discipline they teach, whether it be for the curriculum they're developing. We have staff who are working constantly to figure out how to provide the appropriate support services in an environment that is constantly changing. What I might offer to George is that each of us comes to this where we are. Your question suggests a way in which you're approaching this, and I get it. I also get the fact that our faculty and staff have a way in which they're evolving, and I think that they're working on this. We actually assess critical thinking in our students. Our faculty are very thoughtful about that as it relates to general education. And I probably would offer, this is a great opportunity for you as a student to sit down and give us feedback about what exactly you're referring to. Because I don't think that, I better stop right there. I think that your experience is critical to us, we want to know what your feedback is, and at the same time, giving us specific information. I used to teach, and I'm trying to think of what it is, there's a rhetorical device that that question is using that would be very effective to demonstrate a critical thinking, but I'll use it at another time. Maybe we could talk privately. Thank you.
All right, well, we don't have any questions in the room at the moment.
There were some hands up here.
Ah, very good, excellent.
And there's one back there.
Wonderful. I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
Thank you, Dr. Pollard, for facilitating this session. I'm Tracy Mathias. I am a Senior Program Director in Workforce Development and Continuing Education. And in WDCE, most of our classes are market-driven, meaning we see a demand out there, we create a class, it's successful, our students are successful. How do we replicate that process on the credit side when there are complementary programs that students could take to advance the entry-level training they may have received in WDCE? But the complement can only be offered for credit because it's an advanced level of learning.
Thank you, Tracy, for the question. I'm not quite sure if, maybe I'm not understanding you, but I don't necessarily think that every, I don't want to say this. If a course of study starts in non-credit and it is evolving, I think that there's no reason to say that it can't continue there unless a student is trying to get some type of credential that has to be offered on the academic side of the house. Is that what you're saying? Okay. So I think this is part of what the academic redesign is actually about. When I first got here, I think I spent the first six months hearing from people that credit and non-credit, they simply don't get along, right? And that not getting along is that they weren't listening to each other. And there were some very good commentaries I heard about academic elitism, about quality of stu, I mean, it goes back and forth, right? The reality is that credit and non-credit are housed under one section of the institution, academic affairs. And what we're looking at in this restructuring is how do we ensure that there is complementary responsibilities and that they work together? I saw a startling number the other day, the number of students, and I can't remember it off the top of my head, if Bob Lynch is watching, maybe he could send it in. There was a number of students who were converted from WDCE non-credit courses to credit. That's what we actually want to be doing. So we talk about access. Part of what Amy's team is also doing is going into those classes and having conversations about how do we transition those students into non, from non-credit into credit classes when it meets their needs. Now, the other question has to be, also, if you're saying, you know, here's students who want to see this pathway, and they don't see an opportunity on the credit side, this is where there's great feedback about why department chairs are relevant, why deans are relevant, and provosts to work to figure out, okay, what's the capacity for us as an organization to deliver this? How do we go about doing it and constantly assessing our environment for that? So I'm hopeful that as a byproduct of what we've been going through over the last year in terms of restructuring, will produce some of the alignment issues that I think I hear you talking about. Thank you.
Okay, I actually have a question.
Yeah.
I'm very interested in your perspective about all the news over the last couple of weeks, on the bad side with athletes and domestic situations, and the Ray Rice situation, Adrian Peterson situation. I'm very curious about your viewpoint on that.
Now, you must have been in my house, and we've been having some very rigorous debate. As you all know, we are a fairly athletic family, and we spend time talking about current events in the news quite a bit. And there's this whole issue for me about what is right to be done. And then I also think about, as an organization, procedurally, what you have to demonstrate in order to do that work. So for me, I believe, as a culture, we have an issue that we don't talk about as it relates to domestic violence. We don't talk about that. We don't talk about issues of a certain amount of privileges given to athletes and other folks in our society. We need to start unpacking that and having those conversations, because it ends up being replicated oftentimes in the K-12 space, in the higher ed space as well. So we need to have those conversations, because we want to teach boys how to be men, right? We want to teach girls how to be women and be comfortable in those spaces and make sure they're making healthy decisions for themselves. But I also think, and one of the things we tend to do as a society, we're very reactive. I've never, and I struggle with this, because I never want people to act on me. My father would probably be the first one to tell you, even as a child, I was always one of these people that kind of said, you know, "I'm gonna carve it out myself, let me figure it out." I never wanted to be responsive to someone. So as an organization, I don't want to be responsive. You can't tell me, and this is my only political commentary I'm gonna offer on this, a video shouldn't have to appear for somebody to take action on something. Benign neglect is not something you can, it just, that's what troubles me. As an organization, you should be having these conversations all along about the work you do. It's the same thing we should be. I should not wait until something manifests itself in order for me to act on it as an organization. Part of my job is to be thinking about this and working with the board to prep, our whole conversation about risk management, hey, it's all coming back. This is about having the difficult conversations before you have to respond. Data breaches, same thing. We know, God, I'm looking, Carl, it's not a question of when, I mean, if, it's a matter of when. It's gonna happen. But as an organization, how are we preparing for that so that we can implement it? It's the same thing. You know, I got a little boy, and I have, over the last couple of days, you know, God love him, he's always getting the lecture, you know, because something happens on the news, you know, when we had the Ferguson situation, when we had the situation of Florida, you know, Mama would come home, and I was fired up, because I keep looking at my little baby, and I'm thinking, "Let me have a conversation with you about being a black man in this society," right? And he's like, "Yes, Mama." You know, he knows, he's like, he knows. So, and then when this happened with the Baltimore Ravens, "Let me tell you about something with a boy." You know, and he knows, he's catching it downwind. But this is a conversation as a mother I need to be having. I think as an organization, we want to make sure we have those conversations with our athletes, we want to be having those conversations as those have to be decision-makers, that we don't, you know, turn a blind's eye to something. So those are some of my thoughts, and I, we could talk a whole nother conversation. I have NFL, we need to have a conversation about that, too. That's just, I'm gonna stop right there.
Thank you very much.
If Rocky was in here, he'd be telling us.
We have a question back here.
Good afternoon, Dr. Pollard.
Good afternoon.
Diana Matthews from nursing. I know the past few months, almost several years now, we have talked about the academic restructuring. And a large motivating factor was related to the student's successful outcome in engagement and the one college concept. I know we are in the midst of giving a 100-day review and evaluation. What aspect or what plans are there in place to have the students give their feedback on how this implementation has had an impact on their lives?
That's a great idea. Well, first of all, thank you, Diane, for that. I should tell you, my blood pressure is beautiful, just want to tell you that. She always checks on me about my blood pressure, so I was doing very good right now. But I will also tell you, I think your point is so critical, because, you know, all of this, and I actually am gonna do this as the state of the college, there is a wonderful success framework that the Lumina Foundation has put together. They actually have these five components that lead to high-effective transformative organizations around student success. And they have these different alignments. And I would offer to you, this journey that we've been on for the last four years, and I can say that having been here for that time, has been about these various components. And it all is about student success at the end of the day, and student engagement around these work. So some of the things that we've been doing are a direct result of what the students told us. We sat in a town meeting at the Rockville Campus, the Theater Arts, last year, those of you who were there, a student brought up the whole issue about textbooks. Remember that? I know who I said it. Textbooks, right? And about why at Tacoma Park in Physics 1, they use this textbook, and at Germantown, they use this textbook, and why do I have to pay this, and all these different types. That was, that issue kind of came, and that was a student who brought that up. I am so hopeful that at the end of this process over the next year, students will be able to tell us they can sense a change in that. They see a more highly-coordinated schedule, they see greater outcomes that are happening as it relates to success for students. They'll be able to talk about the fact that they understand the way in which the organization is organized, not their campus, but the organization is organized. And we're getting their feedback. Now, I do know you've been having some external reviewers. Sanjay, I'll turn it over to you to talk about it. Because one of the things that I'm trying to do is set a direction and then get out of the way, right? So I try to get out of the way.
So a number of things are being done. A student, a focus group with the students will be conducted as well. We had an external reviewer who was here, spoke to about 50 people, department chairs, deans, faculty, AUP, SEIU, various groups of people. We'll be doing focus group with the students also. But a 100-day report will come out. A preliminary assessment of this external reviewer will come out in the next few weeks. Then this reviewer will bring a final report in December that will have his student input as well. But remember, this is just, we started on July 1. So I think doing several assessments too quickly is also not the best way to go forward. But we are going to do a pretty serious assessment, and for that, right now, we are setting up benchmarks. And benchmarks are based on certain performance majors, degree completion, successful transfers, reducing the time that students take to complete a degree, reducing the cost. Those kind of things will become our performance measures, and we will have benchmarks and strategies, and we'll measure how we are doing that. So everything is based on students and student success. How do we get continuous information and continuous assessment of this becomes a little bit of an issue? As I said, we started just, what, two months ago? So in these two months, we have done this much. Wait and see, a number of things will happen. Thank you for your question.
And I think the ultimate measure of that, kind of going to the point that Sanjay made, is about student completion. We should, and it's interesting, when I first arrived here, the governor had articulated a 55% increase in student completion by, 55 by 2025, right? 55 by 25, that was the model. The challenge with this, though, is that as an organization, we were having a very difficult time figuring out even how to have a conversation. We couldn't agree with completion was. We had a group working on it. They came with a report about what completion was, and then I realized, I said, oh, we got to go back to basics. We have some real fundamental issues here as an organization about alignment of curriculum. We have some fundamental issues in organization about the ways in which we measure things. I remember asking for a particular course, how much does it take, as an example, for us to deliver this course at Montgomery College? That was a fun conversation. Well, it depends if you're offering it at this campus or this campus. It depends on this, it depends on that. And that should, certain variables are there, but there should be a certain amount of truths that we should all be able to agree upon. And I'm hopeful that the student completion rate, we started to look at our cohort data, is going to be increasing. Student satisfaction, student engagement, wayfinding in the organization becomes easier. Those types of things, I think, would be good indicators.
Okay. We have another question that came in about this Sunday's opening of the Holy Cross Hospital on the Germantown campus. Talk to us a little bit about how exciting it is to have this as part of our campus. We're the only community college in the country with this, and also the Life Sciences Park. What are some of the plans for that and just how it's going to impact the Germantown campus and MC as a whole?
I think that we are in such an exciting period right now as an organization on lots of fronts. Yes, there are moments when things can be very frustrating as we try to figure out and deal with the minutia and the day-to-day types of things, but some of the big-picture things are very exciting. So we are, as far as we know to be the case, the first community college in the country to have a Life Sciences Park. In this Life Sciences Park, we already have an anchor tenant who has entered into a phenomenal partnership with us where they're not only looking at ways in which they can build capacity for us as an organization around pathways from our educational offerings to work in a hospital, but also ways to incent innovation within our organization, ways in which they're thinking about how do we look at advancing wellness in the community? How do we, as anchor institutions, which is what we typically refer to, eds and meds, there's a lot of literature about this, that eds and meds have powerful synergy because they really are the anchors of how a community functions? So here we are, after many years, we're able to create this park, we're able to now have Holy Cross Hospital open, who have been phenomenal partners with us, and more importantly, we get to have a significant impact in the Up County. First new hospital in Maryland, I think, in 30-some years, first new hospital in Montgomery County in the corresponding amount, outstanding in that regard. And then this broader park, the Hercules Pinckney Life Sciences Park, we had to come up with a shorter name at some point, just to refer to it. I've been looking at MC Square. I know it has nothing, but how do we start to refer to it? Because here's this part that's really interesting about this, we have the synergies of the academic part of what we do as an organization and how we began to then partner with the business sector and create a hub of innovation, going back to a question that was up earlier. And we've actually had the Life Sciences Park Foundation, a third foundation we have, with a second foundation, they've actually been working on a business plan now, based on all the changing environment that's happening in this economy, looking at what's happening in the county, what's happening in Maryland. How do we begin to craft a plan for that that's responsive and really becomes, I think, the genesis of some things that can be very transformational for the county? So I'm excited about it. I'll be there to celebrate that. And as an Up County resident, I am delighted to be able to have an emergency facility to take my child to the next time he decides to jump off the whatever. So we are, I'm very excited about that, and I look forward to welcoming them and expanding our partnerships with them.
Okay. We have another online question.
Okay.
And this person actually wants you to be a bit of a visionary.
Oh, boy. Let me sit down for that one.
At the first town hall meeting next fall semester, a year from now. What do you hope MC will have accomplished?
I think that Montgomery College will have made significant inroads in looking at the way in which we deliver our education here. That being, we will have a more tightly aligned and highly coupled educational experience, credit and non-credit, career and general education, that we will be able to see that and make sure that it is aligned in a way that's real. I would like to be able to say that we have designed specific strategies around how we are as an organization, closing our internal achievement gap, looking at very deep and significant ways, and have policies that reflect that, and have practices that we have begun to implement. I would like to say next year that we have secured one of the largest gifts that we can publicly around philanthropy, and that we're very thoughtful about how that will spur the way in which we think about our role in the community. Next year this time, the college will be recognized as the place to talk about workforce development in this county. There's lots of folks talking about it, but we will be the one that they'll know that the college is where we do that. And that we will see gains in the way in which employees describe their experience here at this organization, that they will understand that they are a part of something bigger than themselves, that they understand wayfinding within the organization, and that they ultimately, at the end of the day, feel that the college is deeply invested in them. Those are some broad things that I would say. We also will be successful in negotiating a contract with our full-time faculty, I think that's scheduled for this fall, that we will be successful in securing additional resources for the county this year. We have to go back, and we will have to ask the county for money, that we'll be successful in that. Those are just a few, that could be visionary.
All right. We are just about out of time. Does anyone in the room have any final questions or thoughts that they'd like to share back here?
Good afternoon, Dr. Pollard. I am a student. I'm here almost two years now, going through general study. And why is? Because I'm doing it part-time. And I heard you spoke about the assessment center. Thank you. The assessment center, it wasn't really designed for, to accommodate people who like, they miss out on doing their tests. And I am a student who have a disability, and I appreciate that, the fact that they have this accommodation for me, because I wouldn't be able to continue. One, the timing of doing my assignment. I not speed up where that is concerned, so that is one advantage I have. And two, since I started, there's so much things that, issues that happen to prevent me from going on, and I was determined, because one of the reason is that, at my age, I am privileged to have this opportunity to have a college education, which I didn't have. And I would be the first in my family, like my other sisters and brothers, to have a college degree. And I remember meeting you the first time in that meeting and spoke about it, and you encouraged me that I can make it.
You will.
And I believe, I believe that I can, because I appreciate the professors that I went through before, who really accommodate me. Sometimes it's kind of rough, and I have to be, you know, pleading and begging and saying, this is what is happening. And I'm even fighting not to be homeless, and because of that accommodation, I'm able to continue.
Thank you. This is why we do the work. So I hear you about our assessment centers, and as we're looking at that work, we can't and will not lose that. I also want to tell you, and I remember you, and I kept looking at you because I remember your face, you are doing what we are here to do. We are here to support you, stay that fight. I sat in a room the other day with 12 students, probably 13, who are in our new and our ACES program, and they're telling me stories so similar to yours. They're talking about the ways in which this college has wrapped around them to help them be successful. That's the story we want you to have, and I am so privileged that you're here. I am so honored that this organization is here to serve you, and I love the fact that you're the voice that we ended on today. So thank you so much.
Well, thank you, Dr. Pollard, and I want to thank everyone here in the room and everyone online for participating in today's town hall. Our next town hall is going to be November the 6th. It'll be on the Rockville campus, so keep an eye on Inside MC Online and also the President's Corner Monday message for details on that. For Dr. Pollard and for everybody on the MCTV production crew, thank you so much for participating in today's town hall.